This meeting will come to order. Madam Clerk will call.
Councilwoman Perkins Auguste, Councilman Questa, Councilman Jackus, Councilman Grover.
Here.
Councilman Keenan.
Here.
Councilman Sedanian.
Here.
Councilman Baldwin.
Here.
Councilman Mazza.
Here.
President Gonzalez.
Here. This is a regular conference of the City Council as incorporated in the annual meetings notice of 2012, which was filed in the City Clerk's office and posted on the bulletin board on December 27, 2011, and sent to the Star Ledger and Home News Tribune in compliance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Law of New Jersey. I will now open the public speaking portion of the meeting. Any taxpayer resident wishing to address City Council, you may do so at this time.
And then the justice attorney from the city. The city suffered a disaster in November, but the country averted the worst disaster of having a Republican woman president.
Thank you. Any other taxpayer resident wishing to address City Council, you may do so at this time. Once again, any other taxpayer resident wishing to address City Council, you may do so at this time. Seeing none, I close the public speaking portion of the meeting. We'll move on to the business.
Letter dated November 15, 2012, from his honored mayor advising the Elizabeth Avenue Partnership owns and operates six banner poles along Elizabeth Avenue between Bridge Street and Fourth Street, which can accommodate three across-the-street banner plans. They plan to adopt as a revenue raiser the across-the-street banner pole lease agreement at a fee of $250 per week or priced at the discretion of the Elizabeth Avenue Partnership.
Any comments?
I just have a question.
The Councilman Grove.
Because my question, it doesn't say it in here, but can we find out if they're going to have any discretion, discretion with regard to like parade, announcing of parades and that type of stuff? Because you have a lot of nonprofit organizations. That's all I want. It does say that they have, they have discretion, but I just want to make sure they...
Councilman Mazza?
Yeah, I have something that the Councilman Grover mentioned. Besides, I see it's $250 per week. You know, it might be a little bit too much per week to pay. I mean, advertising you do for the betterment of the city. On the last page, you see also to indemnity, not only the Elizabeth Avenue Partnership, which they are responsible as a nonprofit organization, the City of Elizabeth and the Elizabeth Parking Authority. Why do we put the Elizabeth Parking Authority? What jurisdiction do we have to protect them for what? This is Elizabeth Avenue, this is the street that is not under the parking authority jurisdiction. So that could be eliminated. I could sue the city in case they want to sue the city because...
Oh, the what?
The last page. So, as the Councilman says, you know, if you have a nonprofit organization, even though it's at their discretion, I think there should be more specific and qualified. I mean...
Tony, do you know anything?
No.
Can you find out?
It might be they could reduce the price. I mean, $250 for the month. Usually when you put a banner, banner costs a lot of money to print, especially you want to announce that they say it's a Portuguese parade, a Columbus parade, a Colombian, whatever, Italian parade, a couple of weeks before, you want to keep at least for a month. It's a positive advertising for the city and for the business people.
It does say over at the discretion of...
I understand, but what is that discretion for?
What does that mean?
If you're Democrat, you get it, if you're Republican, you don't get it, or if you, if you're from San Juan, you get it, if you are from Palms, you don't get it. Understand? Discretion or what?
I don't know the criteria.
So, let it be more specific, whether it's a nonprofit organization, then you don't have to pay, just like any other agency that we do. I mean, you know, it's a good thing, good revenue, it's nice to make some revenue, you know?
Yeah, but if it's a private company putting up a title, that's not a problem.
Right. It's a bothwise, charge them, they make a lot of millions, so, you know, whatever, I don't want to say, but if it's a, we want to celebrate the championship of the Elizabeth Marching Band, $250 a week, it's a, it's a little bit a lot.
Mr. Sengaro, you'll be able to follow up on that.
Thank you.
Do you have some good answers to some questions, please? Anything else, Councilman? Oh, I'm sorry, I'd like to recognize Councilman Questa.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay.
Letter dated November 19, 2012, from the Business Administrator requesting authorization for the issuance of insurance with the Chubb Group of Insurance Companies, North Park, New Jersey, through their agent of record, Otis Debt Agency, covering city-owned properties for the period October 1, 2012 to October 1, 2013, and an annual premium of $111,159.69.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated November 19, 2012, from the Business Administrator recommending awarding the contract to Star Ledger, North New Jersey, for publishing legal notices for a period of two years from the award of the contract, in the amount of $150,000.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated November 20, 2012, from the Business Administrator, requesting to amend ordinance number 4010, specifically to reflect the salary adjustments and state health benefits plan for sharing for City Council members, the mayor, and the department directors.
Tony, go ahead, stop me while...
All right, yeah, I just wanted to mention that the Salary Committee met today, and it was unanimous as to the increases...
I can recognize Councilman Perkins Auguste.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Again, the Salary Committee met today, and it was unanimous as to the increases of the mayor, directors, BA, city attorney, and also City Council. The increases were considered fair in relationship to the other city of Elizabeth positions, with some buyer especially, and some other big towns, Jersey City and in Newark. The increase is what amounts to about approximately about $2 a year in tax bills.
Any comments?
Letter dated November 20, 2012, from the Business Administrator, requesting authorization for the proper city officials to enter into and execute a lease agreement between the City of Elizabeth and United States Representative Albi Osiris to lease office space located at the Steven Sampson Center, 80828 Amory Street for Government Constituent Services in the 13th District. Congressman Osiris' office will be responsible for the payment of utilities, and this will be, the lease agreement will be for the period January 3, 2013, and ending January 2, 2015, with no monthly payment.
Any comments?
I mean, I'm happy to see that the congressman is going to be opening up an office here in the City of Elizabeth, hoping that's, that's a good thing in terms of having, you know, access to, you know, to the congressman and his office and the services at the office.
Vice President.
Councilman Keenan.
Especially since it's going to be at the Steven Sampson Center, so senior's going to have to validate it. City Representative.
Councilwoman?
Just thank you, Mr. President, and I want to add, I'm concerned probably the fact that it's in the community will be well for the congressman's support, anticipates for the community again, so, thank you.
I just have a question.
Yeah.
Natural, I'm happy to see, please, there's one question to say this. Have you done a paid pottery?
Utility.
Wait a minute. I think utilities. How do, we're going to be pro rata or something? They're going to have utilities under the term of... I'm just curious, Tony.
It says all got to be...
Number three.
Yeah, it says we'll be responsible for the payment of utilities under the term of the lease agreement.
Utilities of what? The entire bill?
The entire bill?
Well, we'll do it on a square footage basis.
On a what?
Square footage basis. It won't come up with some type of allocation. I don't know if it was determined to be ready by someone, but it's probably a fair way. It won't come up with something. That'll be fair, equitable.
I mean, can you, can you find out?
I would like to see if you can find out. No, wait. I don't want someone to hit us with something that we're not sure, huh?
An exorbitant thing, but...
I know, but it's just like, a lot of people get...
I see them there, you know? Councilman?
Yeah, the building is open every day anyway, Monday, Monday to Friday, and all the lights are always on, the entire building, so, it's probably be something that is just pro rata for the streets, but I can see...
But that's what I asked, was pro rata, and nobody's seen it, oh, I'm sure. Yeah. Tell us, you know? Check the ways you're doing. I think Councilman, you'll find out. Yeah, that's all, that's the way I, my way of thinking, I think, I think, that's all I'm saying. I'm saying pro rata, but I don't know.
We'll look into it. Councilman Mazza?
President, Congressman Albius is part of our area that he actually is going to take care of people from Elizabeth.
The whole city.
The whole city, right?
He has the whole city.
I thought it was only...
No, not only the city.
No, it's even better.
Just prior to Congressman Payne's pass away, they switched it, but like after the incident.
The whole city's under it now.
So, it's even better. I mean, as Patricia mentioned, Steve Sampson Center is open to our community, you know, open hours for the public. The heat is going to be there, whether it's only for our community or for the congressman. The same liability that we cover for our people, you know, it's going to be the same people that congressman is going to be able to take care of in Elizabeth, so, I think the only agreement you probably needed, and indemnity agreement, anything happened to him, then my fault, he doesn't have to sue the, I mean, the City of Elizabeth, you know what I'm saying? So, what did you think else? It comes from the same taxpayers, simple as that. And even child, I mean, if he has to use his pony, he's got to pay for his bill, and that comes within his budget that he has, so, I think it's nice that he comes to Elizabeth, and I'm sure he's going to have a lot of our immigrants in Elizabeth.
It's going to be a plus for the residents of the City Council.
Definitely, yeah.
Okay, and any other comments? Put it on.
Letter dated November 20, 2012, from the Chief Financial Officer advising that additional grants may be appropriated in 2013 State Fiscal Year Budget by Budget Amendment.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated November 20, 2012, from the Chief Financial Officer, recommending that City Council request the Director of Division of Local Finance to make the following estimated corrections in the 2013 municipal budget to account for the city's share of grants approved subsequent to the adopted budget, matching funds city's share from $1 million to $850,000. Local share, Kids Recreation Trust Fund, 2012, from $0 to $150,000.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated November 20, 2012, from the Chief Financial Officer, requesting to qualify those eligible flexible spending account providers who submitted a request for qualification, and they are as follows: ADP, Melville, New York, Flexible Benefit, Virginia Beach, Virginia, E-Flex Group, Madison, Wisconsin, Sterling, Oakland, California, Benefit Strategies, Manchester, New Jersey, Infinity Source, Coldwater, Michigan, AmeriHealth, Porchamp, Pennsylvania.
Any comments? Yes, Mr. Sengaro.
Yeah, this is a new program the city will be implementing. It's mandated by the state, and basically what it does, it provides for free tax dollars for a family up to 5,000 bucks, and for a single, up to $2,500. It's a program that covers the calendar year. We hope to have it implemented the earliest by January 1st, and basically you can have deductions for three different types of items. It's going to be for medical, for dependent care, it's elders and also children, and also what they call a premonia plan, the deductions from a hospitalization. Basically, what it does, just to give you a simple example, if someone's making $50,000 a year, and they want to take out up to $5,000 from their pay to contribute for medical costs, dental, dependent care, et cetera, the owner would be reporting $45,000 on their annual income tax. Okay, now...
It's like a premium option kind of plan.
Yeah, and what happens is that the deductions start in January of every year, so that $5,000 would be deducted, divided by 24 pay periods that we have, and that's an automatic contribution during the year. If they don't take those deductions, so they only have deductions of $4,000, the $1,000 comes back to the city. So, it's going to behoove anyone who takes this program that they have to have some knowledge, understanding of what their medical or dental or dependent care expenses are going to be during the year. But it is a tax saving to both the city and to the employees of the city. So, something that's going to take, I guess, maybe a couple of years to really develop, for the employees to have an understanding. We're going to have an enrollment program within a couple of weeks, and it'll be an education program, pamphlets, and, and brochures, et cetera, bringing things to the employees, but it's a benefit to the city. But there is a small expense to the city, which would be offset by the savings that the city would have for social security taxes, okay?
So, my wife has this in her job. And the kids are going through the brace period.
Yeah.
Yeah. Figure out what it's going to be for the year, or she deducted it, and at the end, you bring the receipts in, and they cut you a check for that amount.
And actually, there's a debit card that's going to be held in, in particular cases, now it's a debit card, they could go to pharmacies or doctors, and again, I think it might really affect a lot of dependent care where, I guess, childcare type of expenses, also elderly care. So, but there's a lot of nuances and...
I understand it's a lot of benefits of what, because you have a person saving from paying taxes and what have you, but down the line, it affects their retirement, it affects their social security, because I think it affects that, they get less.
Yeah, there's a lot of considerations.
So, there's a lot of things they need to look at.
Right, but again, it could be just like for a couple of years.
By year, just a year.
When you have certain expenses that you know of, planned for.
Councilman Mazza?
I, Tony, I really don't understand. You might have to give a better explanation. In other words, if I want to, it will be on a voluntary basis for me to contribute, or whoever's covered for my insurance to contribute a certain amount of my money to be used...
Up to $5,000.
Up to $5,000 per family.
Per year.
To be used for medical...
Dependent care.
Okay.
But you have to use that money.
Right. We don't pay taxes, in other words.
And that money that goes in, then you don't pay taxes.
There's always, and I should be able to cover the 20%, the 30% that does not pay.
Deductibles.
Deductible or whatever.
Those type of things, too. It's going to be a learning process, I think, over the next year or two for employees, since it's new, but again, it's mandated by the state, we're going to implement it, and down the road, it should be...
Too bad, and I have no more children.
But there's a lot, a lot of people have set medical expenses that they know every year that they're going to go in their pocket, or, you know, you set it up, if it's $1,000, $1,200, you set it up.
You know it to whatever, up to $5,000.
Yeah, especially if you have children sickly, that sort of thing.
Especially for dental, you mentioned that.
You can actually plan for some dental, that sort of thing.
So, I mean, there's a lot of benefit to it, you know, just weigh the benefits of it for you and your family at the time, make a decision.
It's going to be a learning curve over the next couple of years for employees.
And any other, any other city, any other county that might have this kind of...
Well, it's mandated by the state, all authorities, municipalities, counties. Yeah, and I'm not sure how many cities have implemented it yet, but we do want to.
I'm sure none of them have.
Okay, right, any other comments? Put it on.
Letter dated November 8, 2012, from the Director of Planning and Community Development, requesting to amend the resolution dated October 23, 2012, authorizing a rental housing program, postponing of two mortgages for a total of $440,000, no, $440,706, held by the City of Elizabeth, specifically to correct the amount of the loan from Sovereign Bank from $1,400,000 to $1,475,000.
Any comments?
But what property is...
This one.
Where's the property located?
No, it's just with...
RHP 115.
They don't have to talk.
Put it on. We'll get that information.
There enough, two and up.
Letter dated November 9, 2012, from the Director of Planning and Community Development, requesting to amend the resolution dated November 10, 2009, and the agreement dated July 7, 2010, between the City of Elizabeth and Josephine's Place to provide life skills training for low-to-moderate income women, specifically to reflect an extension of time to June 30, 2013.
Any comments?
Put it on, Mr. President.
Letter dated November 9, 2012, from the Director of Planning and Community Development, requesting to amend the resolution dated June 28, 2011, and the agreement dated December 28, 2011, between the City of Elizabeth and Josephine's Place, specifically to reflect an extension of time to June 30, 2013.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated November 16, 2012, from the Director of Planning and Community Development, requesting authorization for the proper city officials to execute any and all documents necessary and appropriate to provide a deferred payment loan owner-occupied basic program on the property located at 461475 Catherine Street, Unit 106B, in an amount not to exceed $10,587.
Any comments?
Letter dated November 20, 2012, from the Director of Planning and Community Development, requesting that your honorable body introduce and approve the amended version of the Durant Street redevelopment plan, which will replace the previous version of said plan in its entirety.
Any comments?
Just, yeah, Mr. President, just wanted to receive, I guess, a breakdown of, I know there were questions that were brought up, the phases that were supposed to happen here with the Durant redevelopment plan. Mr. Sengaro, just wasn't sure if you could just update us on what was discussed, like the plans?
No, I'm not, wasn't involved. I was involved, but I could find out. You have any specific questions?
Well, I know a major concern was the fact that they, previously, when the plan was scheduled in the past, they had a big residential plan that they were going to do, and the big concern now was that this plan really doesn't insist for there to be a residential component, and the big concern that there were just going to be like two big box stores, and really, there wasn't anything written down, holding the new development company to the point of having residential as one of the major phases. So, I just wasn't sure. It was, I know the concern was brought up, that was very big, I guess, like the developers that were coming in now to do this, so I just wasn't sure any details or...
Councilman over here, it says that there's supposed to be a planning board meeting December 6. So, I'm assuming that that's probably what they're going to present. It says here, if the planning board doesn't approve it, then this will be pulled from our...
Okay.
It's in the very last sentence.
Okay, when is the planning board meeting?
December 6.
Okay, so they're meeting next week, according on December 27, so it's not going to be on the agenda?
I'm assuming it's not.
Because it's, yeah, because...
What do you think?
Because we're going to be meeting before the planning board meets.
Right, well, they're asking us to approve it in advance.
But is that how it's supposed to go? I thought you were waiting for the approval from the planning board, that's why it was not the previous.
They didn't make this, amended it, didn't they?
They met, the planning board met on this?
Yeah, I think they made it amended, and then they walked us to...
No, we do it on first reading, and then we send it back to them.
Yeah, exactly.
But that's not how we normally do it. Mr. President, it's not...
Yeah, but I think...
No, they, usually goes to the planning board, from their recommendation, they send it out, and we know on it.
That's what they sort of amend. You want us to take a look at it?
But I thought this had already been back.
Then you agree with what they amended with me.
No, I don't think it was.
They have to come back and forth.
I don't think they had that meeting.
George, do you know the...
I don't remember.
This is not even in my packet, so I didn't even, and it was not, it's not on my...
No, this came in late.
It's not even on my agenda either.
Isn't this what we were expecting?
We were supposed to get this at the last...
We held it, because, I remember, we met on this, and then we held it, I forget.
You're right.
At one of our meetings, we held it.
But that's because we didn't go to the planning board first, or planning board approved.
Councilman Mazza?
Mr. President, one of the public meeting, during the regular council meeting, I think a gentleman came to speak against a particular plan that was in existence. He actually, he implored the City Council not to allow, to erase the entire building down. Here says that they will continue until the present structure will be, is raised completely eventually, and then to come up whatever is going to go before the planning board, so, I have no idea what's going to happen on that particular site, so I don't feel comfortable to vote on something that I don't know what's going to happen.
But you know, we never have a planning board meeting, of course.
Right, so that's why, if it's supposed to go to the planning board first.
Yeah, Councilman Questa, then Councilman Keenan.
Yeah, Mr. President, I, what I have heard makes sense. In my, in my few years at the planning board, normally, the planning board would adopt something and then refer to us for final approval. That's usually the procedure that has been followed in the past, so, and if you read the bottom of the letter, I mean, it says, "In the event that the planning board does not act favorably regarding the development plan," I request that we... That doesn't make sense.
So, we should go for...
So, we're going to approve it, and then remove it when they tell us to remove it? I don't...
Mr. President, you finished, Councilman Questa?
I have finished.
Okay. Yeah, it absolutely makes no sense, because we have always, since I've been on council, we've done it the other way around. I would make the suggestion that we table this, and if, in fact, the planning board approves it, do a suspension of rules if necessary, to put it on the following...
That meeting to December 6.
Yeah, but what, the councilor is saying we're going to, we're going to meet before 6.
I know, but he's saying after the planning board meeting on December 6, at following 2.
A suspension.
If we need to, exactly, if there's an urgency there.
Okay, all right, okay, I got you.
That would be great.
I think that's there.
And it also gives us an opportunity to...
Okay.
Hopefully, there's no attached statement that...
Well, they can't do anything until the 6th, anyway.
Right.
The 6th is Thursday, and then that's...
But yeah, like I said, they're asking us to approve it in advance of the planning board meeting.
Don't forget.
I've never seen that before.
The president, they have a meeting also, though, isn't it?
Yes, it's in Washington.
So, it will need to read, yeah, and that's probably...
Well, that's probably why, but...
Then they have a meeting because, don't forget, Hurricane Sandy came through, so the meeting was canceled.
Right. And also, there were some serious concerns.
Not having enough, I mean, if it's the consensus, then to table it?
All right, that's...
Or to hold it.
To hold it. Hold it.
I'm confused. Because I always send it to them. And then he comes back with the, with their approval, without their approval. That's how it goes.
Well, city clerk's saying, this is the way that we've done in the past.
They have up to...
Since there are two readings, this is the way it's been done in the past, the city clerk is advising.
Because I have to send it to them.
I know they didn't meet, they haven't met, so...
They didn't meet because of the storm.
Yes. I'm proud. And we were waiting for them to meet, that's why I was pulled off.
The first time.
The first time.
And worst case scenario, we could do what, Councilman Keenan?
Mr. President, even if that's the case, if we have to start, we passed it, and then it approved it, it should be the other way around.
No, because when it's submitted, it goes to them, they have a meeting, they look it over, and then that's when they send it back, either with or without their approval.
But, Mr. President, I'm making a recommendation that the law department, look at that procedure, look at that staging, because it may be more appropriate to alter that, so that the planning board looks at it first, followed by the...
Followed by the City Council. That may necessitate a little more time, I don't know.
By law, it can actually go either way. It can go from the council to the planning board, or from the planning board to the council.
Thank you, I didn't know that. So we still want to hold it, do we want to...
If we send this back to, we hold this on table, and we send back to the planning board, and we take a look at this, and say, okay, we amended, amended the thing, we're not, we're not going to do a thing against to it in the board, because we didn't do anything here at the City Council, right?
Right.
You know what I'm saying? So we're going to send it back to you, to us again, just anywhere it is now. I'm just making a...
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then we'll prove it.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
So where do we want to go? Hold it, we want to put it on?
Like the councilwoman said, if you hold it, we're going to meet before the 6th. You know what I'm saying? We can put it on the, what, the 12th, the next?
We meet the next week, and then we meet after the 6th.
Right, so you put it on after the 6th. Right. Okay, all right.
All right, so we're holding it?
Yeah. All right, okay.
Let's get their recommendation.
All right. Next week.
Well, I can send them a memo, ask for their recommendation.
Yeah, that's what I was...
We have to wait till after the 6th.
Ready? Letter dated November 19, 2012 from the Director of Public Works, recommending voiding a contract to NBR Services, Inc., North Brunswick, to provide civil engineering services in connection with the Hurricane Sandy damage assessment along the waterfront.
I, uh, my name, Mr. President?
Yes, Councilman Rob.
There's a line in here that concerns me, it says that they will do a preliminary damage assessment report describing structures that require repair or replacement. My request, if there's a way we can do this, Tony, is I would rather they try to find ways to replace it with brand new stuff, if we can, you know? Because clearly, you know, the old fashioned forewalk that we had there did not sustain the modern day storm. And it's evident because the marina, the new bulkhead that we voted on a few years ago, that held, that held really nice. But it was new technology, new bulkhead, so if these guys could look towards replacing with the modern technology, it might be at a code, you know, but that forewalk's been there for, what, 30 years, 20 years? Okay, so, I mean, I think new style, maybe new material that they use, you know, if we're going to go look for money, let's try to go for the gold, I guess. Try to get it done the right way, because if we're going to sit there and just put Band-Aids on it, next year or another storm, we're back to the old. That's my suggestion.
Sounds good.
I'd like to concur, we need to do the 21st century materials and plates, so that we can weather, you know, storms or whatever that may come across if we have no control over them. So I agree.
Yeah, I mean, this is one of the ways the city, I mean, we can begin to prepare for other types of disasters like that that can happen.
I understand, I understand, I just think that, I mean... Okay, that's a good point. Any other comments? No? Okay, thank you, put it on.
Is this, are we going to get money back from FEMA?
That's what, that's what this report's for. It's for FEMA, it's for FEMA for New Jersey Emergency Management. That's why we asked for the stars and then we'll keep moving.
Letter dated October 24, 2012 from Ms. Natalie Ahern, Sovereign Consulting, Robbinsville, New Jersey, requesting an approachment permit to install two groundwater monitoring wells along the city right away on Elizabeth Avenue, within the sidewalk adjacent to 1089, 1099 Elizabeth Avenue.
Any comments?
Letter dated November 8, 2012 from the City Treasurers, submitting this treasurer's report of receipts and disbursements for the month of September 2012, and statement of bank balances and investments as of September 30, 2012. Councilman Massey requesting a commendation for the Elizabeth High School marching band.
Ah, beat me to it.
They defended their title.
I work in school, so I got the better news, they knew, Councilman.
Yeah, I see that. I want to go and copy the article, you know? I was going to request a confirmation as well.
We could present it together if you want to.
You know, but, yeah, because I had requested, I mean, last year I requested, and I was hoping we could bring the band, the families here, but unfortunately that never happened, they wouldn't accommodate coming to City Council to, and this is the second year, the second year in a row that they win the national as well as state championship, you know? It would have been nice for City Council, but I'm not sure, Councilor, how you're going to present that to them, but it would have been nice at City Council.
Well, I'm going to talk to the director and ask them to come before City Council to do the proper, necessary paperwork for them to come before City Council. I'm sure I got to say that, right? I mean, they are children, as long as to everybody.
Absolutely. We tried last year. Yeah, that's why I tried last year to do it, but...
I'll be the messenger.
But maybe we can... I have faith that you can do it.
Oh, don't be so sure.
You got the touch.
I believe he can do it.
We're going to start the once around, but before that, just, I just want to make you aware that my letter out to Community Investment Strategies to come to a meeting, they contacted us, and they will be here at the next meeting.
Who's that?
CIS.
The next public meeting.
Owners, they will be here next week.
Next Tuesday?
Yeah, they plan to be here next week at the next meeting, so. Yes, great, next Tuesday, okay? The ABC meeting for next week also, we only have, you have your materials there, the packet there, we only have three items, two renewals and one transfer. Would we like, would we want to do it at 7:00 on Tuesday instead of having a meeting Monday and Tuesday?
That would be fine. I'll make sense.
Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Yeah, I think we should be able to do it in that time.
On Tuesday, right?
All right, so Tuesday at 7 for the ABC?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right, that's it, we'll do the once around, Councilman, for the disgusting. Councilman Goman?
All right, I just wanted, I don't know, if anybody mentioned, we just want to add the death of Captain Stilton to memorial. And I guess we'll make some later on. And this tragic young lady, young kid, child still alive, so... Unfortunately, those things happen, so do the family prayer.
That's it, Councilman Keenan? Pass. Councilman Rob?
I just want, everybody has in their packet today a media advisory, the youth build, going to have their commencement, graduation on Friday, the 30th of November at the library on Broad Street. It's nice to go out and give a little support to these kids. There's 42 of them that went through a program, they got their GED and their trade certificates. The program that, the brand they runs, the youth build program has really been successful in getting some of these kids who, like the high school dropouts, back into the line and trying to get something positive out of it for their career. So, yeah, I just want to remind everyone if they can make it, that would be nice to do. Thank you.
Absolutely. That's it. And then, Councilman Massey?
I have a memorial, but I left the name at home, so I'll give it to the secretary. Sorry.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay, Councilman Questa?
Yes, it's one thing, but we talked about it in the past, and I've been thinking about what to do regarding Councilman Jacobs or recognizing his years of service. And I think it would be appropriate, because as the councilwoman stated the other night when we recognize several people, anything that we do with City Council, you know, states and the books, it becomes part of the history of the city.
Sure.
So I would like to recommend, Mr. President?
Yes.
A resolution commending or recognizing Councilman Jacobs for his 20 years of service to City Council. Hope everybody, I think it's a good idea. And then whether he comes or not, that's something we can, he can always keep, and his family can have, and nothing that we are probably thinking of.
Definitely.
I think it's a good idea.
Great, yeah. Thank you. That's it, Councilman Sedgley?
I just wanted to echo Councilman Rob's sentiments. I know everyone feels the same, and Pat, it was a terrible loss for our city. Definitely keep her family in prayer. I just wanted to, I received the information that November 27th is going to be the wake from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. at McCracken.
What, what? 27?
Yeah, November 27th, from 6:00 to 9:00 at McCracken. And then the funeral will be the following day on the 28th at 9:00 a.m. at the Haitian Bethany Baptist Church.
McCracken's the one that sends your job, right?
I believe, yeah, I believe it's the one in South Broad Street, yeah.
What time is it?
At 9:00 a.m. on the 28th.
McCracken's the one that sends your job?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's it, okay.
Motion to adjourn. So move meeting.